Yep, you slammed that hammer.
All right. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order and Mr. Quinlan?
Shut the blinds.
Just doing the roll call. President. Dan Glennon is excused for the moment. Richard Shelton?
Here.
Leo Fillion is excused for the moment. Don Archibald?
Here.
Roseanne Quox?
Present.
Here.
Do you want to read the first case?
Please. The first case before the zoning board is going on Monday, October 2nd at the Town Council Chavers, 7:00 PM. First case for regular business is Kristen and Drew Kiefer. Did I pronounce that properly? Kieferber, I should know that.
It's meant to be Bush.
In combination with Heidi and Cliff Chase, there's a public hearing for a variance referenced Section 3.04 of the New Market Zoning Ordinance. The applicants request a variance permit replacing a six-by-eight-foot playhouse with no foundation with an eight-by-12 shed with no foundation. The shed would be set along the property boundary line, which is within the allowed setback of 15 feet for the R3 zone. The property is located at 5052 Elm Street, tax map U2, 168, in the R3 zone. The, uh, of course, we're at it with sheds again. It seems as though we've discussed sheds in the past at this board, and we've also discussed them with the planner in relation to setbacks, whether it be a side setback or the shed itself placed behind the rear of the structure line, the primary structure line. At this time, the existing playhouse shed is placed, I would say, just beyond midpoint of the primary structure, which is a duplex. The shed is tucked nicely away with an overhanging pine tree, I think it is, that, pardon me?
Maple.
Maple tree. And, uh, it's not really within view of the road, but certainly it abuts and is on the, uh, abut to the left of the property on their property line. The requirement and setback for this is 15 feet. There appears to be, uh, I would not say ample room in the rear of the property to place the shed and meet the setback of the 15-feet side and rear setback, because certainly it would diminish the usable space where the applicants now have flower gardens. And I think I saw some child's toys out there possibly that the children use for a play area. It's all enclosed by fence. Uh, it was not an unsightly or, uh, unimproved area. But again, we've got the zoning ordinance to deal with and reference the sheds, and that is the case before you.
Oh, did I get that? That's okay.
Before we go any further, I'd like to appoint Pincar and Roseanne Quox as board members. And Mr. Archibald, wait until the next meeting. That's fine. At this point, Mr. Kiefer, you can step up to the podium and say your name, your address. We'll start with criteria number one for the variance.
Sure. My name is Drew Kieferber, and I live at 50 Elm Street.
And what we want to start with is the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. You'll state why you feel it's not contrary to the public interest. The board then can ask you questions. Uh, we can go into discussion and ask the public if there's any concern or if there's any support, and we'll move on from there.
Okay, great, thanks. What we're requesting from the board is a variance to have an eight-by-10 shed in our backyard. Uh, the intention for the shed is for storage of lawnmower, uh, children's toys, uh, parent toys, snow blower, things of that nature. We live in a duplex. The duplex does not have a garage. Uh, it does have a basement, but we need to go up three stairs to get into the house to go down to the basement. So having a shed would be convenient for storage of such things. We don't know of any reason why this would be against any public interest. It doesn't block any sight views, or it's not in the way of any sidewalks. It's a setback from the road setbacks. The setback in question is the back line setback.
It's the sideline side, isn't it?
It's the back line.
This is the frontage from, is from Elm Street, right?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, as I enter onto the property from Elm Street, you're looking at the unit on the left of the structure?
Yes.
And isn't the shed to the left just in back of the fence on the left? Are you looking at from, uh, the Beach Street side?
If, well, no, if you're, if you're on Elm Street and you're looking at the front of our house?
Yes.
It's on the opposite property line.
Direct on the rear.
So I'm, I'm saying it's the back line because officially our address is Elm Street, and it's the line parallel to Elm Street on the back side.
All right.
Where's the dollhouse is on the side.
Well, the, the playhouse is actually at the Turnkey Landfill right now, because we had an opportunity to remove it earlier this year, and we did so.
Oh, that's what, because you saw the shed just on the other side of the picket fence.
I saw a little dollhouse, a scaled-down shed with little doors and windows in it to the side as you're looking at it from Elm Street, the left side.
Oh, oh, okay.
And I thought that's where it would be under the trees.
No, sir. It's, it's along the back line.
Well, that's what I thought as well when I read that you were replacing a, uh, the playhouse, six-by-eight playhouse. That's what I took it as well, is to the photos that you took, was the one just directly over the picket fence.
And that would explain the pine tree as well, because there is a pine tree there.
All right.
Yes.
Now, it was shed. Your neighbor has a shed that abuts it.
Yes, that is correct.
Should you put a new one there? It would be back-to-back with the sheds.
Yes. The, the location that we're proposing is, I can't say completely back-to-back with the garage of our neighbor behind us, but a portion of it would align back-to-back.
That's the garage on the diagram that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The garage for two and four elder, or one and three. I'm not sure which.
Two and four.
Okay, two, four.
Any other board members?
I guess you could have, you have the two sheds, because there is a shed, um, right here.
Is there a representative from your next-door neighbors here? Or have they voiced a concern?
This one?
We'll be taken care of next. That's what we'll open up to the public.
We've spoken to all of our neighbors.
Okay.
None of them have voiced any objection.
And, uh, how many sheds do you have on the property currently?
Well, I don't know if the playhouse counts as a shed or not. If, if it does, then I suppose one.
Which one is?
The, the structure that Mr. Quinlan was talking about?
It's a pine tree, that structure?
Yeah. I would guess that's a four-by-eight maybe, so it's a shed. I, I don't know the definition of a shed, so I'm not sure I can say.
It's a, uh, structure is for storage outside the home. It's enclosed.
This is definitely built for a child.
This, yeah, this.
Oh, I mean the one next to the pine tree that was mentioned earlier, not, not the...
The, the existing non, uh, I don't know. If you want, if there's two structures on the property, one of which is a duplex and the other of which is this small building, which Mr. Quinlan has referred to and which I think Dan has seen pictures of as well, it's approximately, I'll say, four-by-eight.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a very small playhouse. The, the roof line is approximately here.
Okay. Absolutely not. Not if it's in health.
Any other members of the board have any comments, questions?
No, I don't have any. I don't have any questions. Is this deeded as two pieces of property?
No, sir. It's one piece of property. That's why you'll note the application is actually four people. Kristen and Drew Kieferber and Heidi and Cliff Chase.
Mm-hmm.
We have a very unique, uh, setup there. We have one deed with the four of us living in the house, all four of us own the house.
Divided house.
Pardon?
A divided house.
No, sir.
One house.
[laughing].
All right. Uh, now, I'd like to take, I'd like to open up to the meeting to the public. Are there any members of the public that are, have any objections or any positive feedback for the application? Okay. It's closed. Yeah, we'll move on. At this point, you can go on. And anybody like to have a motion for, this variance will not be contrary to the public interest, if you don't mind?
I can make a motion that it's a finding of fact and a motion that the variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
And what is the...
As we have no people speaking against it.
I'll second that.
Call my favor, signify by raising your right hand, say aye.
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 Second. This is more of a BOSHA, I would imagine. It's an area variance. Now, you filled out the, uh, section of the variance for simplex, the simplex analysis, but it's sort of, I think, used more for a use. The use is any question here. It's more of the, the area, as you're asking for a setback variance.
It should be Boca.
So we'll start off, it's on the second page.
That should be area, and that should be use.
That will be the applicant, area variance, seeking area variance under the BOSHA analysis.
Okay.
Area variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, speaking to that, um, as you're probably all familiar, it's a relatively small lot there, uh, with the house basically situated in the center of the lot, which means that we do not have very large setbacks from any of our boundaries. We treasure what small backyard we have. We have four children in the house, ranging in age from 14 to nine, and, uh, we encourage physical activity. So we have our backyard fenced in from when there were smaller children, um, but we've maintained it, and, uh, we try and encourage our children to use the backyard for playing catch, throwing frisbee, kicking soccer balls, swinging on the swing set, um, you know, general playing. And, uh, if you look in the backyard, you'll see the, the dirt paths where the, where the kids do most of their playing. Situating a shed with the 15-foot setbacks would, uh, make it so the shed's right in the middle of our area to throw the ball to play catch or throw the frisbee. That's the, that's our difficulty.
Were there any questions or comments?
I don't have any.
I'd like to open up the meeting to the public. Say, members of the public have any objections or any close public hearing? The motion is in order?
I'll make a motion from the finding of fact that the benefits sought by the applicant could not be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
And, well, due to, well, due to the location of the land and, and, uh, not wanting to
put it in the middle of his property.
The constraints of the land. The constraints of the land.
Yeah.
Have a second?
Second.
Uh, members signify by raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Chairman?
Yes.
Um, you guys were discussing number one under BOSHA, but the motion reads number two under BOSHA. If number one was the area variance needed to enable the applicant's proposed use, but number two is the one that was voted on?
We already voted on number one.
Uh, number one under BOSHA.
No, that was...
Right.
So we actually beat two.
Maybe what we should do is rephrase the motion to, uh, more accurately describe B1, BOSHA 1.
Finding of fact and a motion that the area variance was needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property based on the statements indicated by the applicant.
I know one of them was the limited land size.
Yeah.
Do you have a second to that, revise motion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll move on to number two under BOSHA, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restriction on the property, which is the 15-foot restriction.
Yeah, this one, I'm not sure what the fair and substantial relationship phraseology means. I mean, I, I think the general purpose of the, of the zoning is such that you're not interfering with your neighbor's property or imposing any undue stress on your neighbor's property due to your locations. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what the question is.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment to that?
Yeah.
The publication from the Office of Energy and Planning, when it refers to your question, states that this test, this test attempts to balance the public good resulting from the application of the ordinance against a potential harm to a private landowner. It goes to the question of whether it creates a necessary or unnecessary hardship, and that's referring to the fair and substantial relationship of the zoning ordinance and restrictions on the property.
That was unnecessary hardship?
An example of necessary hardship would be the dimension of fires, not a hardship.
It's under the...
Or, uh, or drowning.
Substantial relationship.
Prevent the movement of air and visible light, things like that. Uh, just go on and, uh...
I, I don't know of anything that would, uh, be a hindrance for citing our shed in this location.
When we discussed this, this in the past, Mr. Chairman, we talked about the potential of, uh, trash being stored in the shed, and the odors from the trash themselves accumulating in the shed so closely to the property line could be one of the reasons why it's a nuisance to the landowner, adjacent landowner.
I've also heard that if there's fuel in the storage, if it ignites, uh, it's close to the other property's line, which they have a structure there. It's, uh, their garage, then four feet, so it'll be more prone to catch down a fire. If it were 30 feet, it'd be less likely, so... Uh, are there any members of the public, therefore, against this application? Okay, close up. Any comments from the board or questions from the board?
No, well, the only comment I got is that there's just probably a hundred of these sheds in the section of town he lives in that are up against the fences. So I don't think that we're doing any harm by granting him his relief.
Well, that, that's true, but the zoning ordinance is, the ordinance, the point of the zoning ordinance is to bring everything into compliance as quickly as possible. In this case, the request for these variance is what's being presented, the, uh, the five criteria to, uh, seek relief from the variance or the zoning ordinance itself. You can make a judgment on what he's, uh, proposing to you, but you can't change the ordinance.
Right. No, but we can grant a relief.
Yes, that's what's in your post.
Right.
It's answering the question that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the ordinance and the specific restriction on the property. That's the question we're answering. Say yes or no.
Well, we're doing the area variance now, right?
Uh, this is an area variance.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make it a finding of fact and a motion that the benefits sought by the applicant could not be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
Pleasure.
Pleasure. Raise a glass.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? When we do a finding of fact, uh, maybe we can find a specific, um, instance, such as before, we noted that the, uh, the small lot size prohibited having the shed applied because otherwise it would be in the middle of the lawn, essentially.
Yeah.
Number three, the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. That's the third problem in motion.
Yep. Relative to public rights, uh, again, I don't think there's any sight line from a road that would be interrupted in any way, you know, around a corner or anything of that nature.
Excuse me, I, I, the third is the variance is inconsistent. If the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, I just read that. That's the third one. The spirit, the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
Just going, starting with this and going through, not...
Okay. This is, uh, this is what we do.
I think the spirit of the, of the ordinance is so that you're, uh, so that as, as a homeowner, you're not disturbing other homeowners' properties unduly. Um, it's our opinion that locating the shed in this location doesn't, doesn't do that. It's in the proximity of our neighbor's garage. It's consistent with other sheds in the neighborhood, other structures in the neighborhood.
The, the, the spirit, I think, is the health and safety aspect. Uh, any questions, comments from the board?
Is, excuse me, is there a fence on the Beach Street side of the lot?
Yes, sir.
That is, how, how high is the fence, approximately?
Thirty-six inches, 38 inches.
Oh, so I mean, it's not really one that blocks the view, you can see over easily.
Correct. And it's a, it's a picket with a gap fence.
Is there landscaping there in, in, along the fence?
There's gardens on both sides of the fence.
But I guess my point is, can you see the shed from the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Like to open up the hearing to the public, or any members of the public? I assume this will continue. All right, just got to ask. Can we close the public? Motion is in order?
Well, it's a finding of fact based on the location and layout of the land, and I'll make a motion that the variance was consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Aye.
Vote to number four, substantial justice is done. If this variance has substantial justice, it will be done.
We, we don't think having a shed located there will harm anyone else, and it will certainly make things a little bit easier for us. And we don't think it's contrary, significantly contrary to the idea behind the ordinance.
Any questions or comments? We would like to know how far away from the property line we are going to need, if this variance is passed, in order to, uh...
Condition.
State this correctly, if it, if it turns out that way, a actual figure of how far it is from the property line.
Yeah, we're, we're showing two feet in the plot plan that's attached.
Still, I thought it was two and a half.
Branching relief.
Plus or minus.
If this passes, probably. I saw, I saw two. We should have that.
I believe it said two and a half also.
Two and a half.
It's a, it's a two plus or minus.
Oh, it's two plus or minus?
What, six inches?
Okay.
I'd like to, public hearing?
That's as much an acknowledgement of, uh, where exactly is this boundary line as anything else.
Are there any members of the public that can state for or against? Okay.
For what it's worth, the, the two-foot number comes from the approximate distance from the fence and lot line to the neighbor's garage. That's enough space to be able to sneak through and be able to paint the fence and move the fence if we need to, things of that nature.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For my edification, since these shed, the questions in my limited experience here seem to be coming up fairly regularly, what would happen if sometime in the future, any of the issues that are raised concerning safety or that sort of thing were to be raised? Would the shed have to be removed? Or is this given a unlimited...
It goes with the land, variance goes with the land.
Forever.
Doesn't, has nothing to do with the owner, it has to do with property.
All right. I'm not necessarily saying it has anything to do with the current owner, but if, in the future, if the id, what was the original intent of the 15-foot limit? If, if it was to provide for, uh, safety and some of the other things that have been mentioned, that now it's being proposed, those issues will not be a factor, but if sometime in the future they were to become a factor and could be identified as such, is there some recourse?
They're appealed within 30 days, one, by...
But let's say six months from now, or two years from now, something comes, the neighbor comes and says, "Uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, I'm smelling gasoline fumes from the shed next door."
Do you know of any, Mr. Vincent?
In that case, probably the storage of fuels would be an issue.
All right.
If, uh, relief is granted, then the shed in this case would be permitted there indefinitely.
Okay.
I think you have a good point as to what is the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Something I'd like to also bring, if two feet, I don't know exactly, you're not going to be able to get a ladder in that amount of space to fix a roof, any ladder I know of. So that's something that may be taken into consideration, is maintenance of the structure. Two feet is, uh, I'm a thin guy, but I can't work in two feet. My elbow would swing back. So there's going to be encroachment for maintaining the property, you know? I think that's a reasonable statement to make. Two feet is, um, you know, it is what it is. So just keep that in consideration, that a, uh, there's a big difference between two feet, four feet. The town calls for 15 at the time, so I'd like to keep that in the back of your line. I know the abutter doesn't object to it now, but owners change, this won't.
That's...
So...
Would, um, uh, three feet from the fence be, um, cramp the yard, the play area, too much?
In, in our ideal world, we'd like to put it right on the border. We put in two feet because we think that's a reasonable amount of space to sneak in there and be able to move, you know, paint, et cetera. I, I agree, you won't be able to put a ladder in there, but you have three other sides of the shed that you can access with a ladder.
The reason I say is because in the past, what has come up, and I think it's, it's a good point, that maintaining a structure, which you're going to have to, you know, as part of the zoning ordinance also, is to maintain your structure, the, uh, section, but to maintain the structure.
[inaudible].
You know, and you're not going to be capable of doing that without encroaching with two feet.
But it's only, it's only seven, seven and a half feet tall up to the roof line. But it's only, it's only seven, seven and a half feet tall up to the roof line, isn't it? Or is it six feet?
Yeah.
I don't know that you need a ladder to get, to do anything other than get up on the roof, which could be.
How, how far off the property line is the other structure at this point? Is it two feet also?
Which other structure?
Garage that sits right behind you?
Yeah, that's approximately two feet.
With your thirty-six inch fence between the two?
Yes, sir.
I always suspect this, Chairman, the part of the requirement or the setbacks is due to fire that in one structure. I, I think you've mentioned the structure on the other side of the fence is a garage used for storing equipment, parking, or vehicles. Say if you have a fire in one, then you're going to most likely have a fire onto a second structure.
Hmm. That's public health and safety, which is something to consider. Maintenance, fire, there's nobody in there, some movement of air and sun.
Yeah, and there's nobody living in there, so if, if it did happen to catch on fire from the other one, there's no life in danger, it's a, it's a shed.
But it's, it's good to keep in mind.
Yes.
Well, the ordinance doesn't speak about whether you live there or not. The ordinance speaks of structures being backed from the property line.
You, you haven't made a motion unless.
I've asked.
You have.
No, I didn't make a motion.
All right, the substantial justice has been brought, motions in order.
I'll make a finding of fact in a motion that the substantial justice would be done as the gain to the applicant would be greater than a loss to the general public.
Do we have a second? Mr. Carr, second, just for, all those in favor signify by raising your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the fifth part of variance, no, the value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished.
Yeah, it's our belief that placement of an eight-by-ten shed in that location will not diminish the neighboring properties.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would say, goes without saying, but as long as the shed is maintained in an acceptable appearance, that, that statement is true. But if it were to turn into a mess, it could then be, I would suggest, be, diminish the value of the, the yard next door. But as long as there's an ordinance that requires that it be properly maintained, then I guess that's not, should not be, ever be an issue.
And, yep, just, you know, the two feet, that's what we're, that's what he's applying for, and that's either changed by the board or accepted by the board. But, but again, that's a good point. Maintenance is always a concern. I'd like to, yes?
And also, all the other homes in that area have sheds the, the same way because of the, the constraints of the land, so he, he wouldn't be diminishing the values of anybody's properties because they're all similar.
Is it keeping with the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other? The members of public have, say for or against the application? No? Motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to finding a fact that the values of surrounding properties would not be diminished.
Do we have a second?
I'll do this one.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand and say aye.
Aye.
One final motion to accept the application at hold.
I'll make a motion to grant a variance to permit relief of dimensional requirements to permit a shed to be no closer than two feet of the property line, as all conditions for a variance have been met.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Just remember, it's a thirty-appeal period, so if you're going to do a ward, nobody appeals, could be up to decision between the, just keep that in mind.
Great. Thank you, one and all.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I make a suggestion that on the agenda for our next meeting, we might discuss sheds as an issue, maybe come forward with some suggestions relating to placement of sheds. I think sheds are a important aspect of anybody's residential structure. Kids bikes, garbage cans, expensive equipment for lawn mowers. Some sheds are bigger, will accept a riding lawnmower. So certainly the shed, if there isn't a garage available, protects the equipment, toys from the weather. Weather is fifteen foot is too restrictive. I don't know if that would apply in every case. Is two, two feet acceptable? I'm not so sure that would apply in every case. Should it be located behind the back of the primary structures, the building itself? So you might say, well, we don't have any setbacks if it's in back of the building. If it's on the side of the building, maybe you might want to find the setback requirements or if it's, might be screened with abu baiis or whatever comes to your mind. We could discuss that, and then with that discussion, we can move it forward to the planner and maybe change the ordinance if you feel that something should be done with this ordinance.
We get a lot of applications for sheds. Definitely for various.
Possibly, with the zoning.
Yeah.
Particular area.
He made a very good point when he mentioned that if you put it fifteen feet in, it would really, that would probably diminish. I mean, you have a shed in the middle of the lawn, it's high.
Yeah.
And if I can speak to that for just a very brief moment, if we actually put it fifteen feet from our back line, so that the entire structure is fifteen feet from the back line, it would be against our back deck. If for some reason there were a fire in the shed, now we have a fire in the building, our home, not in the neighbor's garage.
See, this is a situation where we're between a rock and a hard spot, because one, you have property maintenance and fire hazard. On the other end, you have, I'm not gonna sense.
Same thing, same issues.
Right against that.
Yeah.
But at least he'll have a nice neat yard now. We won't have to look at a snow blower all year.
That makes the neighbors happy, too.
Richard?
Hey, um, yes.
What Mr. Vincent suggested is great, but I think maybe requesting the town planner to be here next time, and then maybe a representative can go with her too, although I am, I'm now on the planning board as well. So I think to have the town planner at, at any meeting that we discuss that, so we could get that information to the planning board to change it.
What does the board think about that?
I think that's the route to go.
Good interface.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we could have the schedule, since it's presented, if we have a couple of weeks, maybe to fit her schedule, give her a couple of options, let her know right away. I can ask her.
Or I can even mention it at the next planning board meeting.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. Vincent, can you, can you stop on this next case?
The, on the agenda, under regular business, the second request for relief here this evening is from Herbert and Ruth Richmond. The public hearing for variances reference sections three-point-oh-two-B, three-point-oh-three-B, and seven-point-oh-two-B of the New Market zoning ordinance. The applicant's request for variances to permit the second residential structure of the market portion of the property where a portion of the existing residential structure in Lee crosses the town line in the New Market portion of the property is less than two acres. The property is located at Wally Falls Road, tax map R five, lot five-dash-thirteen in the R-one zone. The, I'll show you on the map where it's located. Because if you're driving down, this is where the construction is, this used to be, the sand pit areas that bend down. The lot in question is from ideas you passed on Wally Falls Road. Everybody know that location?
Yeah.
Right across the street from that is the conservation land. You see that there's a couple four-by-four posts right there, maybe you might have noticed that.
Tidal swamp.
So, this is the last lot before you go into Lee. And I think if you look at the map that is associated with the request here this evening, you see that there's a residential structure, and that residential structure, a portion of that structure crosses over into the town of New Market. There were suggestions earlier. Not seem to work well with the applicant. The applicant is determined to move forward with the various request, and certainly section three would apply to this. And I guess I would be looking for the board's opinion on section. Mixed-use development.
Mr. Chair? If I may speak, let the board know that Attorney Bolt is from Donahue Tucker and Chindala, who is my, my law firm. He does not represent me. John Radigan did, and he was here with the KIM and had no problem, but I just wanted the board to know.
Do you feel that?
I don't feel there's any conflict.
I can agree with that. Yeah. The board does.
Under, I'm sorry.
I'm all done.
Section seven-point-oh-two on mixed-use development states that section B, the residential only, that there shall be no more than one residential structure per lot.
Two-B.
The, I think if this was a duplex on the adjoining lot, that seven-point-oh-two may apply to this. Or it would be other than a single-family or duplex residential. But I guess at the board's discretion, I saw their pleasure for detailing whether or not seven-point-oh-two-B response to the request that they gave this evening.
What is your feeling on the town line being a natural boundary line as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned?
The, I think there's a state RSA on that, and the, I think, Chris, help me out with this.
Yes.
I think the, the community that has the most activity on that lot supersedes the use of the area, is that how that?
No, it, it really goes to the owner's discretion under the RSA six-seventy-four, excuse me, for the record, I'm Chris Bolt, Donahue Tucker Chindala, representing Herb and Ruth Richmond and their daughter Polly House, who are in the audience today. Referring to six-seventy-four fifty-three subsection one, that allows the applicant to treat the boundary line of the town as a lot line for subdivision purposes. You might have seen some subdivisions, I know I've had one in, of the other side of the line, in Lee, where there was a, a lot that was in essence created that way, and its size is viewed as a pre-existing area. We're coming before you, though, belt and suspenders, asking for both a simplex use variance and a BOSHA area variance, because I don't have more than two acres on this side of the line, on your side of the New Market line. Dan mentioned, we weren't thrilled with the concept of a lot line adjustment. A lot line adjustment means I've got to have some land on your side of the line that I can move into this, this parcel, and I don't. We don't own any other land in New Market. The lot continues on in Lee, and frankly, further up, which is shown on this plan, this is the lot in question, and Polly also owns this acreage here, and that's why Lee considers it a total of five-point-one-three, I believe.
Can you show that, show that again, Chris?
Surely. This is the lot in question.
Right there?
Right here.
Okay.
This is Route one-fifty-two.
All right.
This is the other acreage that Polly owns, signified as Lot B on this plan. Is that landlocked? It's landlocked from a standpoint of it does not have its own frontage. Its frontage considered this lot. Lee has urged them for purposes, for their purposes, as one lot.
You're not showing this on this, you're saying this, this is.
But I show you.
Parcel B, okay.
Where does parcel B extend from that?
I just have, that, before we go any further, I just, could you explain how the, you mentioned, what was it? RSA six-seventy-three?
Six-seventy-four fifty-three one.
Could I clarify something on that, Chris? I, I mean, Richard?
One thing, I, I just wanted to, I think that's a very important part of this to our application, I just wanted to clarify that before we moved on.
Just can clarify before we move on to anything else. Six-seventy-four dash fifty-three states that land affected by municipal boundaries can be used as a boundary line. So you won't have to get, go to a planning board and get a boundary line adjustment, unless the existing, which we have, unless the existing structure is dependent upon land in the other municipality, which is what this is. We do have a house in the other municipality of Lee that is dependent on its existence in land in the other municipality, which is New Market. Therefore, it would not apply as a municipal boundary line. They'd have to go before planning board for a boundary line adjustment, and then come here for relief for the size of lot.
Could you explain what you started saying earlier again?
Okay, let me.
You mentioned it was a belt and suspenders type, but you're asking for two, both a BOSHA and.
We're asking for simplex. If you look at your dimensional table, it is a two acres per residential unit in this zone. This is an R-one zone.
That would be the BOSHA.
That'd be the BOSHA. The use, because Dan gave us a denial letter under seven-oh-three, that two, no two residential structures on a particular lot. Our argument is, okay, I'm not sure that's applicable, A, because seven is dealing with mixed-use development, and we don't have the commercial aspect of that. But even if, even if that is a technical reading of your statute, we came in and saying, okay, well, we believe we can meet simplex in this situation. I can prove up the elements needed because of the unique nature of this lot, and because your definition of a residence, of a dwelling unit, is such that it is dependent upon the kitchen facility, sanitary facility, and sleeping area, is the way you define residential unit. And as we provided in our packet, and I've got a copy of exhibit A here, where the town line cuts across this family room, and also the garage utility room area of the existing building, nothing on the New Market side of life is a residential dwelling. So I don't think we need one, but just in case you disagreed with me, I can meet the simplex for, for this project. So I'm, that's why I say belt and suspenders. If you took a reading saying, Chris, you don't need. Market side of life is not a residential structure, therefore you don't have the second residential structure issued. I go forward only on the area.
What we, whatever.
One comment, Mr. Chairman, I think that the requirement to be seven-point-oh-two, looking at it, the residential only for mixed-use development doesn't apply. We're dealing with only a single-family structure on the Lee side.
Mm-hmm. I don't see how that applies.
That's what I'm saying.
There should be no more than one residential structure per lot, and that's why I wanted him to explain how the lot line essentially divides the lot.
And I, I think that's a fair question, and certainly I think there should be a response to that, but in reference to the request for a variance from seven-point-oh-two-B, I don't think that should. Although I do think that the question itself is relative to the applicant, but not under 7.02.
In essence, that I don't need a variance from 702, I need a variance from the three sections that we've asked for.
But I think Mr. Chairman has brought up an important question here, that my opinion would be that there are two residential structures. And the other side of that is, I also agree that it's not a residential structure unless you have the facilities for cooking, bathing, and living itself. But I think a portion of that residential structure is on the Newmarket side of the town line.
Roseanne, you had a very good point when she mentioned the services.
Not so much services. That would be a situation that would be called scattered and premature if you had a piece of land in one town and you could only access it through another town for services. That's not what we're talking about here. What he's talking about is it's not having two separate lots. He's stating that 674-53, in of itself, if you have two towns, one lot that's dissected by two towns, two municipalities, in this case, one side's Lee and one side is Newmarket, you can consider it a boundary line if the arrangement of the structures, and I'm just paraphrasing, in one of the municipalities is dependent upon land in the other. So in other words, you can use it as a boundary line because the town line dissects it unless the existing arrangement of structures in one of the municipalities is dependent upon the land in another, on the other side.
So in this case, the way you read it?
That's what's happening.
It does not apply.
It does not apply to this. That, you cannot consider what he's asking under 674 as a boundary line. There's no boundary line here.
Okay, the way I'd like to handle this, we go through variance, just as normal.
Sure.
Starting at number one, variance would not be contrary to public interest, and the applicant will stay in this case. At that point, you can have any questions or comments to the board. We'll open up the public hearing. Questions, comments, go to the board. Rebuttal, so what? We'll go straight through like that.
Could I ask the code enforcement officer a question for us?
Please.
What we're dealing with is something we're probably never going to see again.
I agree.
And the applicant, right now, is paying for a vacant lot and they're taxed for $57,000 on a vacant lot.
Correct.
Is that a grandfathered lot?
It's a, if the, if the structure was not over the line, I would say that you would not be here this evening. It would be designated as a buildable lot.
Yeah, as a grandfathered buildable lot.
Yes.
So all we've got to determine is what's over the line.
Well, we have to answer the five questions as it applies to that lot.
Yeah, well, that can be difficult.
The, I guess it's the board's pleasure. Do you, do you see that the applicant is required to be here?
I'm not sure. I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
Because of the structure being in both communities, it wasn't a decision that I could make.
But when I look at them being taxed for a vacant lot.
Right.
And they're paying on $57,000, it appears to me that they should be able to develop that lot. That's my opinion.
Well, then, you could make a motion, I would suspect you could make a motion to the board that there was an error on the part of the zoning administrator to request the applicant to be here before this, for this evening, and that you do not feel that a variance is required for the construction for residential use.
It would be, would that be for us to say? Is the applicant coming in front of us?
I'm pretty much sure.
So it'll be an appeal from administrative decision.
No, I'm not so sure that is an appeal from administrative decision, depending on how you word it.
Put it this way, Mr. Chairman, we thought it was a, an easier, softer way to come to you and ask for the variance that the code enforcement officer had suggested, rather than contest his finding. I think, putting on my municipal hat, if I'm giving the lecture like I'll give in Newington for the LGC and the question had come up, you always have the right to accept or reject jurisdiction. You can say, in looking at this and seeing this, as the board, you can decide, no variance is needed. Thank you, Mr. Bolt, you get to go away. You know, Herb gets his building permit when his contractor comes in. That is a decision of the board that if any of the neighbors were upset at, they would have the same rights to ask for a rehearing. They would also have the right to, when the building permit was issued, say that was incorrect. That would then come back into you. So it's not that there is a procedural due process issue that you have to be concerned with. You can do it one of two ways. You can have me march through and vote on each and every one of the five elements plus the, each prong of both BOSHA and simplex, if you see the need for me. Or you can say, as a jurisdictional matter, we don't see the need for a variance because of what we have here that you won't see again.
But I don't know, I don't know that we can go against a state RSA and approve that when it states if the land, if the home, the adjacent home in the other municipality is dependent upon the land in the connecting one.
It does seem very clear.
It's very clear. I think, I mean, like Richard said, they're spending $57,000 a year. Minimal dimensional requirements. I mean, I don't really see any type of a problem, but I think they should go before Planning Board for a boundary line adjustment.
May I ask, before we go too far down that line, or let me put in one other fact in the mix, the town of Lee isn't a butter here. They did get notice. And if there was an issue from their perspective of what was happening on their side of the line, or they had a concern about what would happen on your side of the line, they have every opportunity to be here. And I don't think they are.
I'm from Lee.
Are you from Lee or are you from the town of Lee?
Where does the town of Lee abut?
It is my understanding at one of the northern parts.
Way up in the corner.
Right.
Right.
Right. So they, we, we did the abutters to the five acres.
Well, before we go too far, well, we really, we're going to keep this in order.
Sure.
Okay.
What I, my point is?
I'm going to ask the board, do, which board members think that we should hear this case tonight?
We should hear it?
That we should hear this case regard, as the applicant presented it, for the reasons stated by the zoning. I think we should hear it. I don't think there's any question.
I'm fine, I'm fine to hear it tonight, but I'm also fine in why we can't grant them relief to put that home on there.
Well, that, we haven't answered, we haven't even went through, we haven't had any testimony from the public, we haven't had any testimony from the applicant as regards to the five questions. Do, does?
I have a question. I think something we ought to really take into consideration. Is this landlocked land behind?
Well, it's.
The part that's in Lee?
The same person who owns, is it, am I correct in saying the same person who owns the lot that's shown on, the white plane?
Polly owns all of this.
Okay.
So she owns basically a boot.
How many acres are there in that?
There's three acres in this part and 2.13, I believe, or 2.1, yeah, 2.135 in the lower part. And for purposes, in Lee's eyes, it is all one lot of 5.135 acres, part of which is in Newmarket, the bulk of which is in Lee.
Where is the existing house on there now?
Right here.
That's it, right there, okay. So there is a?
Where we would be putting what we've termed as the guest house for Herb and Ruth is on the Newmarket side solely.
And is there any other access from that front piece on 152 to the back piece?
I believe it comes down to a point.
Oh, that long, that long piece? Okay, so now there is access to the other piece in back for possible, for another house?
No.
No?
This is.
Okay.
Lee is dependent on Newmarket, the Lee house is dependent on Newmarket's land for access to the property. If it was subdivision, there is no road frontage.
If we were going, one of the conversations we had with Dan earlier on was, did it make sense to try to come only within the Planning Board purview and do a configuration that would give the, I believe it's the 200, might be 250 feet, that is required by Lee for frontage, might be 150, and give enough frontage for the Newmarket side of life to have enough frontage? And we determined that the only way to do that was a true gerrymander, that you would have a, an angular line coming across and then going up this boot that made no sense at all. That it was, and also, that meant that it could be transferred ownership, and they really didn't want to do that. It'd be two separate parcels. This was viewed as a way of allowing the mother and father to live adjacent to their daughter in their elder years. And it's not, it was viewed as the lesser of the procedural evils and have this be more of the accessory building type of situation, but because, because that mistake happened, you know, that toe of the land, toe of the house came across, we are in this situation. I think were, that were this house solely on Lee, I don't think Dan would have had an issue with it. We would have been one residence in the Newmarket side of life, but.
On the other hand, though, you still wouldn't have a cut and clear subdivision according to the RSA 674.
But we weren't, keep in mind, we weren't asking for subdivision. We were saying, that is a line for purposes of looking at where is the residence? The residence is on the Lee side of life. By your definitions of what is a residence, because we don't have kitchen, we don't have a bathroom, we don't have sleeping area.
I think, I'd like to continue with the variance application, and there probably will be a lot of questions that come up as the criteria come up, and how is, how is it applied to the contrary to public interest section or whose substantial relationship?
You did have a question before the board as to whether or not we thought we should hear it tonight. I'll send him to plan.
And I would like to, yeah, I know, I think we should hear it, Mr. Shelton said.
I should take a vote on it.
I do have a que, yeah, I would like to know.
I, I think it should go back to Planning Board for a boundary line adjustment. I think we should hear it.
I have to abstain because I'm not sure what's going on.
I don't think that's what the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't think that's what Mr. Shelton was proposing. I think the proposal was, does the board feel that they have jurisdiction either to hear this or not hear this this evening? And then I think your issue, whether or not it goes back to the Planning Board is the second motion to the table.
Oh, I thought Richard meant that he felt we shouldn't even have to hear it, that they should just be able to build.
Correct.
That was my, that's my, my point of view. Yeah.
More different, you think?
That was the first vote.
I think it should be heard. I think it is a matter of zoning. Even though it's obscure, very obscure, I think it should be heard. I mean, it's, there's been a decision made by the administration that this application is not, is contrary to the zoning ordinance for three reasons. 304A?
And 670, and the state RSA.
For the ones, 303, 702, and 302B.
I don't think the 702 would apply to this. I would, if the zoning going to straight out, we send that request for variance request.
So you're looking at 302B and 303B?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I conclude that this lot existed prior to the current zoning, i.e. it has grandfather aspects to it?
The portion that was, that is in Newmarket has, I believe, existed, I won't say since time immemorial, but for a very long time. I believe a subdivision of the Lee side of life did happen in the 70s of various, when this comes through, this is a subdivision that was approved on the Lee side of life that carves off two of these lots here.
Does the board feel that we have jurisdiction to hear this? That's a better way to, I know, Mr. Shelton, you said you don't think that we do.
Well, I, well, if you want to hear it, it's fine with me, but I don't even think we have to hear it. But that's only my point of view.
Does anybody else have an opinion?
But you're the chairman, whatever you think. Do you want to get an attorney's ruling? To make everybody feel more comfortable?
See, I?
But I'm not your attorney. So in the interests of procedural protocol, I think the issue is not whether you have jurisdiction. You have jurisdiction. It's whether you are not, you wish to exercise that jurisdiction. And because Mr. Richmond has his obligations that will take him somewhat south of here at the beginning of November, we would prefer to move forward. I believe we can satisfy your questions on the standards. And that will then give the, the members of the public who are here on, from the Lee side, a chance to have their piece set, not have to come back another night. So I'm not sure what you want to do, but if it's my preference of, is it tabled or is it heard tonight, I'd prefer to be heard tonight. And the other procedural question, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure the voting members of the alternates have been selected yet.
Not for this case. Well, they have been, they have been prior to this. It's, Mr. Carr.
I wasn't sure if you did it for each, each vote, I'm sorry.
We can.
I apologize for sticking my nose in.
I'd like to appoint Mr. Carr and Sir Roseanne Cox as members for this case also. I think they brought up that. Okay, so what, does anybody object if we move forward?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Start off with the variance will not be contrary to public interest. In reference to nominating the, I think Mr. Ashambo was also entitled to take part in the conversation, but I don't think he's allowed to vote.
Right. And I think the reason I didn't nominate for this trial is because you haven't set your vote yet.
Yeah, good.
I know, I've been on the constable commission for a while now, so now I'll think it works.
My intention is you should have it alternating and.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, the first element in their criteria is the variance, that the variance would not be contrary to public interest. And I will briefly summarize the evidence that I have put forward in our application. The case law is clear through Chester Rotten Gun Club that the variance must be unduly and to a marked degree contrary to what the ordinance is stating as its basic zoning objectives. The question on the table now is whether this property, with its unique configuration, bisected by the town line and having this existing structure come across with a toe of the line, whether that is in some way a conflict to an undue and marked degree to your desired zoning ordinances. We would posit it is not. Your, your objectives are stated both in the general purpose of Section 3 and in the way you define things within your ordinance. I mentioned it previously. You define residential unit as something that has within that dwelling unit the bathroom facilities, kitchen, sleeping facilities. And while it is technical, it is an issue for your consideration, that is, Exhibit A to our application clearly indicates we have none of those items on the Newmarket side of life. We are asking for a, an. We are asking for a, in essence, a guest house, a secondary residential unit to be able to be placed on the New Market side of the property to allow Herb and Ruth Richmond to live, continue to live independently, but much closer to their daughter. Right now, they live on Langs Lane, you might be familiar with it, as Conservation Commission, where they gave the conservation easement for the trout pond there. This is something they need, they need to be closer to the daughter now, Ms. Polly House. The property has approximately 1.47 acres on the New Market side of life, so that we are less than the two acre requirement for the R1 district. As Mr. Vincent mentioned to you, we are this last triangular sliver on 152 right before the town line. As the shading on your zoning map here indicates, this is the B3 district. We're the only one on the towns, on the northern side of 152 that still are one. The B3 district states that it is put into an area that is underutilized for residential purposes, meaning that there is not a great deal of residential use back here. Also, the lots can be smaller than a two acre lot. Our reason for raising those is, those are statements of public interest in that area, in that particular area of town. And we would say that this desired use is not contrary to the public interest of use of land in that particular neighborhood. We've already cleared the hurdle that we believed that 702 was not necessarily applicable. But we do raise to your attention the stated purposes in 705, which deals with your ordinance's desire in, albeit another area of town, to have the establishment and construction of affordable elderly housing. This would allow the Richmans to stay in the community, stay on their own, not have to go into assisted living facility at this stage of their lives.
Which building are they going to?
They would be in the guest house. Okay, the secondary. And...
So I assume it would be designed for elderly?
Correct, correct. It's going to be one, one floor, wider doors, things of that nature. It is, they, they desire to have a basement still, but they recognize that Polly may be using it for their help, or helping them for that use a little bit more as time goes on. Accordingly, when you also look at 105 of your ordinance on nonconformity, none of the express provisions of nonconformity apply in this particular situation. So when you take your ordinance as a whole and look at the statements of purpose of, of what that public interest is, nothing in what we are proposing here would be contrary to that public interest. So we ask for a favorable vote on that element of the, of the criteria.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments?
One question is, why is it being called a guest house and not a resident, a residential building?
In part because of the size. We are not anticipating it to be, the size of the current structure wasn't viewed as being your McMansion by any means. Is it going to be 1,200 feet? Is it going to be 1,500 feet? I don't know that that's been decided yet. But it's, you know, I don't anticipate it being the same size as this double floor structure here.
Right. For some, I have a problem, I don't know what the reason is to call it a guest house. You're actually asking for a dwelling which falls under the criteria that you stated what a dwelling is.
This would be a dwelling unit, no doubt about that.
It would be a dwelling unit. I don't like the guest house on there, and I have no idea why guest house is even there. As you said in definition 1.11, a residential unit is one or more rooms designed, occupied, intended for occupancy as a separate living quarter, which what this is, with cooking, sleeping, and sanitary facilities. So by your own definition, this is not a guest house, it's a resident, it's a residential unit.
There's no doubt it's to be a dwelling unit, that's correct.
It's a residential unit, and I would like guest house basically removed.
We don't, we don't stand or fall on you staying with guest house or anything. This is to have the desired building, a building permit issued for the desired building.
But a guest house, I don't know if that would have different criteria for taxes, which I mean isn't our problem here, but that's where I think it's going. And as far as the affordable elderly housing, if you're using that for criteria, then the ZBA would have to place a condition that you would have to be 55 or older or 62 of old to live in that residence, because that is what the affordable...
That's a totally different zone.
But he's, I know, but he's quoting it, and he's using that.
I'm saying that is an overall element, and...
But you, but it really can't be used as an argument, because as a matter of fact, the other house that's there is a two family, so if they wanted them that, there's two kitchens in that, in the house next door.
In this house?
Yeah. You...
My daughter lives in the house with me.
You have a top floor and a bottom floor, and you have completely separate, it has upper floor, it has a living room, kitchen, and the, and the lower floor has a living room, kitchen, bathroom. So you have two separate units there already. That's a, I, I don't know what Lee calls it, but that's a two family, you've got two kitchens.
I was not of the, of the impression that they were separated out, that there was one, that you couldn't, there's no communication between the two.
I'm, I'm just looking at what, what was given us here.
What we would be, we, we have no attachment to guest house from a standpoint, we're not claiming it for tax purposes, we're not claiming it for some special protection. We're not relying on the elderly housing, we're giving that as an example of the overall public interest as one brick in the wall that I've tried to build on what the statement of public interest is. So, I'm not sure that a condition is warranted here. I would talk to my client about whether that was necessary if at the end of the ballgame you were saying there was something you needed to pass this variance. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Is the intent, if this were to be approved, to change the existing floor plan of the existing house from the current as depicted on the plan as a two-struck?
There's no, we are not looking to change anything on the existing house, is my understanding of the request.
And that's totally out of our jurisdiction.
Okay, no, I was just...
Yeah, because that's in Lee, so that's out of our jurisdiction.
I think if they, yeah, they have to, to turn into a two family, if Lee allowed it or didn't allow it.
Right.
Yes, sir?
You say he's getting a head south, so basically this is going to be a seasonal home, correct?
The question would be, is it going to maintain that if for their health they can't continue to go south? So I don't, I'd rather not, I have not, I purposely not pitched it as a seasonal. I'm having it as a dwelling unit, is the intention.
I don't think it's our business if they go...
Right.
Leave for a year or two.
Doesn't make a difference.
For six months. Do I get a chance to speak?
If you need.
You will. Okay, you said no.
Let's talk first.
Any other members of the board have any comments or questions for the application? I'd like to take a chance to open up for the public hearing. Are any of the members of public for this application?
I have maybe a question.
Okay.
Do I have to say who I am and all that stuff?
Stand up here and state your...
Do I have to do, no, I don't have to do all that, I'm small enough.
Say your name and...
I'm not going to.
You have to do it.
Oh, geez. Joanna Russo, 460 and four, and 464, Wildly Falls, we are butters to this side of the property.
Can you go initial, please?
No. Ruth, if you really needed to know. My question is, will the prop, will the, will the dwelling meet all the town setbacks as far as lot lines? And is there a plan? Is there something we can see of what the structure will look like? As, as a neighbor, as the neighbor, I'm just kind of curious of what it would look like, as so it's not going to decrease the value of the property next door.
I think, yeah, first of all, you have the only question?
Do we have anything else? That's it. That's all.
The answer to the first is an unqualifiable yes. It will, the desired structure will meet setbacks. The design of the house has not been decided yet, the floor plan, the, we don't have an elevation yet.
Square footage.
Not, not per se. It is intended to be stick-built tower, it's not going to be a mobile home.
Yeah, that, that was, I guess, my biggest concern, was that it not be a temporary...
Right.
You know, on blocks kind of structure. Okay.
Are there any members of the public that are against the application? Have any other comments?
Okay, go one more. Well, I thought of it before, now I'm remembering. Do I have to say my name and all that all over again? Oh, thank God. Just before, when you were talking about that, the state stature, the RSA, the piece of, and the way you read it so that I was understanding it, so was that one property is dependent on the other? The property in Lee is obviously dependent on the property in New Market as the septic and well leach field are located in the town of New Market, as is the access to the property. So that was all, it is dependent on that property, and just, so you have to talk about that, not have to pay no money.
Thank you. The septic is a, or, I thought the septic was...
Put it this way, the plan is to have a septic that is big enough to service both, because this one is relatively old.
Where is it?
Do you know Herb, Polly, where the existing leach field is?
The leach field is towards the front of the property in the New Market part, I mean, my entire frontage is New Market. So it's towards the front of the house in the New Market part.
Approximately where it is there on that.
Okay. We have septic tanks shown on the large map that's in your packet.
Tank.
Right, that's what I said.
Or is you're going to need two tanks? Probably.
A tank for each house, with a new one for the new structure, obviously, and they would...
One on the ladder, this existing tank?
Yes.
The one over here on the, this side, Herb, underneath the house, is existing. Herb?
Cherry.
Not a problem.
What issues?
Herb and Polly, is the existing tank shown on the map? Is this one existing? For the record, yes.
Ever since the last... This is a matter of zoning.
But if...
The simplest solution is a lot line. We could sit for an hour and a half on this, going through all the variables and still not get anywhere.
I mean, bringing out the portion, now that the leach fields are there, I mean, are they just going to expand as existing? I mean, this is, we're in effect approving all this by approving this, and I'm, I'm not comfortable with this at all. We need a boundary line adjustment.
May I ask, Ms. Quox, what boundary line do I adjust? Which way do I go? I can't move the town line. I can't add property to the New Market side because we don't own anything on the New Market side. That's a boundary line adjustment. If you were concerned that I have to get a, a certified septic field before this gets an occupancy permit, I have no problem, that being a condition of the approval, because we're going to have to do that. That, that solves the problem of what leach field services what. And we have to have the well radiuses defined to be able to get the septic approved. So I can meet your concerns as conditions of approval. What I'm concerned with, with the concept of a lot line adjustment, I don't have any land in New Market to adjust with, and I can't move the town line.
But can't you just add a piece of land from New Market onto their deed? That would be a boundary line adjustment.
That, this is already on their deed.
Right.
Their deed describes...
Right, right, right now, the dissecting line there is the line that's going through the house that, that divides New Market from Lee.
So you're saying carve off something around this?
They should just go straight up so that everything on the, on the Lee side is all on that parcel, and everything on the New Market side.
I wouldn't have enough, I'd have to do the weird gerrymander, as we discussed.
Just go put a line straight up.
Because otherwise I would not have enough frontage in Lee.
And where is access to the existing house now?
Through this driveway. The use for both.
We thought that some of the landlocked portion of property was in New Market, but it's all in Lee.
It's all in Lee. The town line for your benefit here is shown right here. Okay, all of this is in Lee. I have nothing, if I had land in New Market, we wouldn't be here. We would be in front and just, just moving things around. But we are surrounded, as your map shows, by the B3 or the road or Lee. So hence, we're to you to avoid carving something that would give a 150 or 200, I forget what Lee requires, frontage for the existing house and come back enough to give enough acreage for the New Market side. That just seemed crazy.
They never told us why gerrymandering it so that it could be two parcels.
It would create two very oddly configured lots. One that would be almost, I think we figured it out, it would come over approximately to this side to give enough frontage in New Market. You would in essence create two bird beaks, two things that were very oddly configured. In the past experience with the planning board, the planning board doesn't like that. We thought this was easier to handle administratively, and easier to handle from an economic side for, for the Richmans. We did not have to go to an engineered plan for a subdivision that we felt would not pass muster with the planning board.
I, I don't understand, you mentioned that you're uncomfortable in it.
He's, no, I'm, I'm getting a better, no, he's explaining it very well. And are any taxes paid on the primary house now in New Market, or that's all paid to Lee?
The house taxes go to Lee.
Totally.
It's just the lot that goes to New Market.
And the lot goes to New Market.
Which is now about $1,000 a year.
Okay, that's not in current use or anything right now, is it?
No, it's not nearly enough. They don't have...
That's right, five acres. Okay, okay. And I mean, I really, I do see, if we, if we really can't do a boundary line, and if the state has to approve the septic, also in relation to tunnel swamp...
But the septic is a state matter.
It's a state matter, so that would be taken care of by him in, in, in the state, so that would be accordingly...
What we're, what we're looking at right here is...
I'm starting to agree with, with Richard. I mean, they've, they've had, they've been paying taxes, it's, it's a lot, $57,000 a year.
But, okay, this is something that...
Not that the assessed valuation is, not that, they've been paying $1,000.
A thousand, but it's, but, but they're assessed at 57,000. It's, it's basically, it is, it's, it's, it's on the assessment records.
It's taxed as a buildable lot.
It's taxed as a buildable lot. And I, from record, I think if the state has to approve the septic, we can't do a boundary line.
But where one lot, where it's not, it's essentially part of the Durham land, because the Durham property...
Lee.
Lee is, relies on the New Market portion to exist, so that's not a natural boundary line, according to that R17, as far as we're aware. It seems very clear that it's not, because it is dependent. The road frontage is essential. So, I think that the minimum lot size, you know, I don't, I guess you could argue it either way, pretty much, but right now, we've got 1.35...
1.43?
1.4.
1.47 in New Market.
1.7 in New Market.
Which would be a buildable lot. They would not, if they, if the portion of the house in Lee was not into New Market, they would not be here.
It'd be grandfathered.
Yeah.
What's...
The other thing that, and to make this work, is would an equitable waiver be the thing to ask for? Assuming that it was by error, that someone misread the property line, the house ended up where it was, the equitable waiver is granted, once the equitable waiver is granted, then there is no issue about the building permit. Chairman?
I think that's a good point.
I'm happy to handle it however you wish. I didn't feel I had all of the arguments in my favor, but they may well be. You may well find each and every one of the criteria, which I wasn't planning to argue, but I will, and I open to the book. 674-33A gives you the power to grant equitable waivers for physical layout, mathematical or dimensional requirements. The violation was not noticed or discovered until after the structure was already up. I think we are clear there. The violation was not an outcome of ignorance of law, failure to inquire, obfuscation, a great word to put into a statute, misrepresentation, or bad faith.
That's what you make your money on.
I'm hurt, I'm deeply distraught, that here, I think it was a good faith error, that the line is not abundantly clear. In fact, I think the closest mark, there is a town bound way down, but I'm not sure where along the line anything is. Violation, which in this case would be the toe that comes across the existing building, does not constitute a public or private nuisance, does any surrounding property value interfere with or advert that any present or permissible future use of any of the property. And here, we would say that this toe does not impinge upon any of the abutters, nor does it impinge upon the desired use on the New Market side of the property, where the second dwelling unit would be put over in a location that would meet all of the setbacks. It would also meet, to have its septic system approved, it would meet the state criteria for the septic system, where the well would be, where the wells radiuses for the existing well, and the new well would be. So, all of that could be met. And that due to the degree of construction or investment made in ignorance, the cost of correction far outweighs any public benefit. Well, the cost of correction is moving this. We can't get there from here. So, the benefit to be gained is inconsequential when compared to that cost. Having come here for variances, you are within, I believe, your power to tell me I'm asking for the wrong thing, and then anybody that was here for, and concerned about it, would be concerned about the variance, and would have foisted their concerns, and we had some comments earlier in the night. So, if you choose to grant us an equitable waiver whereby we now have permission to get the building permit for the desired structure, with the condition that the septic system obviously has to meet the state standards, we will gratefully accept it.
I think the public wants to be...
No.
Change it midstream?
Don't vote that.
We didn't require that for Carol, down next to the lawns, that if they went for an equitable waiver, that they would have to re-notify.
And that we would waive a fee.
But, and we would waive the fee, but is there any way, I mean, you know, it's a taxable lot, they have to do things by the state, is there any way that the board can just say that we feel they don't even have to be here?
That's something I was brought up earlier, yeah.
And that, they don't even have to be here?
I already brought that up.
It's, it's a, it's a, yeah.
I really don't believe we do, but...
Having heard more evidence, you have the authority to say, because you were here on a variance, we've determined that you don't need a variance.
And it's a buildable lot.
But, that's the board's call.
But, what would, Dan, they, I mean, I do have concerns, they are across from Tuttle Swamp, I know the state takes care of that, what if they decide to, and you can say it's not a problem, but I am concerned, what if they decide to pave the driveway, there's no culvert in front of there, runoff into Tuttle Swamp?
It's planning.
I know, but how do we get them to planning, to make sure that that's done, to protect the environment and the safety?
Because the state would handle that. It's a state road out there, isn't it?
No, that's our ordinances, they would just be concerned with the septic, so that's my concern.
You already have a culvert in front of the house.
Is there a culvert there?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If the board has the opportunity and the right to make any decisions they want, or requirements that they want, as part of the approval process, part of the approval process could be specific to those concerns that Roseanne has mentioned, to go to, to go to the planning board, to only look at those issues this zoning board has required, especially mentioned, Tuttle's Brook drainage.
Yeah.
As a condition.
I would say that they would have to do some type of presentation to conservation and planning in regards to the continued protection of Tuttle Swamp, in regards to any changes made in this property, in regards to placing a new residential unit there.
And then there is a line of thought, that is, there's a line of thought, that our reason to be here is to answer these five questions, and not step outside of them too, though. That's, we're asking, is asking for a variance on a specific RSA.
But if, if we feel that they, so we would have to go through those five criteria in order to make that conditional approval, or can we just...
I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we do.
Does the board feel...
Do we, Chris?
I don't think you do, it's just like Dan's withdrawal of his decision that 702 applied. I think you can say, we do not believe you have to do a variance. You would get the right to do a building permit. A condition of the building permit is, if you're gonna pave this thing, you gotta have to go to CONCON. My question would be, do I have to go to, are you saying I have to go to CONCON for anything? You know, it might be easier to get the variance right now, I don't know, because I'm here tonight, and we have the 30 days, then run. I don't know what your intent is, what hoop do I have to jump through now, that if I don't need the variance?
You just decide to pave.
What do I have to meet? I'd just like some clarity from the board.
You know, that driveway that they have in place now, I don't think there's anything for preventing them from paving it as it is.
That's right, that's true, okay.
And I don't think the impact...
Just wanted to make sure.
Things, you know...
It's fine, that's why we're all here, we're wanting to make you comfortable, we're wanting to get the record clear, so we know what we have to do.
I don't even think they have to be before us.
What?
Dan's getting nervous.
Again, I think we're looking at a buildable lot, the only reason the applicant is here is because a portion of that structure lies over onto the New Market property. On the other hand, the concerns that have been brought up as far as drainage issues, those are real issues that are part of our zoning ordinance, our master plan, our planning board, and for us to look out for the benefit of the community, I don't think is beyond the scope of the activity or the responsibility that the board should have. And I think it's with all fairness to, again, address your motion, that does this applicant have to be before this board this evening? Whether or not you vote yes or no, you can say these conditions would still apply to our decision of a yes or no before the applicant be before this board this evening. And I think that would be fair, looking for the issues that this town has, and the purchase of the conservation land they have done, the conservation activities themselves, the preservation of our land, the enhancement of our environment, I think it's all within the fairness and the way to work the deal out, because otherwise, the applicant wouldn't be here, except for that part of the house over the line. But that's, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you've said that it's a violation of the ordinance in these three aspects.
Not the second one.
Okay.
He drew one.
Two, two of them.
Only because there's a structure over the property line, otherwise, I would just look at that as a buildable lot.
I think, yeah, I don't disagree, but do we not have to make a decision to grant the variance from your, you've made a decision.
Okay.
We're either gonna enforce your decision, or grant relief from your decision.
Well, if I knew what the vote was on the board, I could make a determination on the request for the variance. If the board was to say they don't feel that the applicant should be here, I would agree with them and rescind the request for relief to Section 3.
Does anybody wanna make that motion?
With...
With conditions.
With condition?
Asking the building inspector, the zoning official, to reconsider after the evidence has been provided.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to ask the zoning code enforcement officer to rescind his items he had for not approving the lot to be built on, with the conditions that they have to meet Conservation Commission's requirements for the drainage system, and the state would handle the septic system anyway. I don't think there would be any more than that.
I don't think this, but if we're putting a condition on, I don't think so, because there...
He said we can't.
May I...
We're putting a condition on, we're saying this is either allowed to do, or it's not allowed to do.
And if we're saying it's allowed to do, we don't have any right to put a condition on it.
However, if I may, Mr. Chairman, for a building permit to be issued, and a certificate of occupancy to be issued on a dwelling, we have to meet various criteria that are not before you, but are before Mr. Vincent. Those include that the construction has to be put up in such a way that there's not gonna be erosion, drainage problems that are created, the septic has to meet the state, all of those are in the building code side of life, which we would have to meet. I think you're wanting us, by saying, okay, you don't have to be a variance in front of the ZBA, does not remove anything from what I have to meet to get the building permit issued. I have to meet the building code criteria, whatever those regulations are, which I believe include silt fencing, no impact of drainage beyond a certain, you know, percentage, that's fairly open and obvious when you're putting a relatively minor structure in the middle of an acre and a half, or acre...
1.47.
1.437. So, I think you have that protection built in, and what you're determining tonight is whether or not, having heard a presentation, do we need the variances that were originally thought to be necessary? And if we don't need those, in your eyes, I'm still having to play with the building code, and those conditions are always there.
A question to Dan, say if we say he doesn't need a variance at all, that we can send him home, and we don't have the legal right to place conditions on that, when he comes to you for a building permit, he does have to do the septic with the state, so that takes care of that, does he have to present you with engineer's reports as to placement of the house, the setbacks, the topo, drainage?
Does not.
He does not, see, so we wouldn't be able to determine if...
This town does not require that?
For a building permit, I don't have to give you a plot plan showing that I meet this, the setbacks?
Well, a plain plot plan, but you wouldn't have drainage on it, you wouldn't have topo on it, or anything, so we, there would be no engineer involved to determine where the runoff is indeed going, and it isn't going. And that's a concern, and any, I don't know how that...
I don't think you got a concern with that, we've got a person here who was on the Conservation Commission for many years, who has gave many, many acres of land to conservation, and I think he's a conservationist in his own right, and is he gonna let something go?
I don't think it's a good road to go down, if we're saying, we're either going to consider this a grandfathered lot, or we're not going to consider this a grandfathered lot, based on something to do with the power to put on conditions. It's either, they don't know, I think they're...
Well, I think we should just grant it, then I'll withdraw my motion, I think we should just grant it without any conditions. The condition, whatever, when they come before Dan, he's gonna make sure things are going right, and I know darn well that the applicant is gonna, just from his past history.
They're gonna have an engineer designing the septic, I mean.
Yeah, the state they have.
I'd only get to address Roseanne's concern about the water sheeting off of the property across the road into the swamp.
Well, I think, I have to agree with you, obviously, we're not talking about 8,000 square foot dwelling here, right? First one, eight and a half, yeah, small guest home on it, and I don't think you're gonna generate all that much runoff from that.
Did you might have 8,000 square feet of paved area sloping to the road?
Well, it's gravel now, it's not paved yet, but you're right, I mean, if they do pave it, then that would be an issue, but how do we determine whether they're gonna pave it or not?
I mean, even though we don't set conditions, anything said in a public hearing, well, that's only if you grant approval.
Well, does anybody think that...
Well, you wanna quickly go through the variance?
Anybody on the board?
Well, I...
And this way, if we approve it, then we can give them the conditions?
Yes.
And that'll make everyone happy.
We do have a motion on the table.
I said I withdrew it.
Okay.
Nobody's seconded it.
And I think we...
Did you wanna restate your...
Well, somebody's talking about wanting to go through the...
Just so we can set conditions?
Well, that, I don't think that's right.
Okay.
That if you think that we shouldn't even be here, and then you say that, in order to set conditions, we'll say that we are supposed to be here, it's either we're supposed to be here, or we're not. And, that I just asked the board this question, does this apply? Minimum lot size, the minimum lot size in each district is specified in the dimensions table. Note the additional requirements. Okay, it's two acres, we've got 1.45 acres, does that apply? Because, is it grandfathered, or is it not? That's my question to the board.
I'd say it's grandfathered.
I think, I think that's fair to say.
I'd say it's grandfathered.
It's in New Market, we have no jurisdiction over in Lee. The second, and would you agree with that, or would you not agree with that?
I would not agree with that, only because it's a portion of another structure, of another town on the property.
Okay, I think then we should hear that case, because there has been a decision made by the administration. We're here to either enforce his decision, or to overrule it. The second is, the maximum residential density in Section 303D, the maximum residential density in each district is specified on the dimensions table. It's one. Do we think that by, that we need to be here, by adding another housing unit, are we adding residential density to a lot?
No.
I think if we need, I think if we need the first one, we need the second one.
If we're looking at the tax map, we're not.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's a separate...
We're looking at the tax map, we're not.
Okay.
It's a separate, I mean...
Do you think we need it, or do you think that, because it doesn't matter what we think, it matters what you think, right? We can either enforce it, or...
This is such a unique situation, that I don't know if we even have the right path to get to the right answer, and I'm not even so sure that we have the right regulations in our zoning ordinance to get to the right answer on this situation. As far as, your first question, 3.06 was it?
Mm-hmm.
On the minimum lot size?
Two.
It would not be a question if there was not another lot, and another structure impinging onto that property. The residential density, I guess, again, I'll just respond by saying it would not be an issue if there was not another structure impinging onto the lot.
Okay, so I think there's a very good reason we're here, it's because there's another structure partially on the lot. We should go through the criteria and vote on the criteria, if conditions need to be put in, if they don't, we don't.
And I think we've discussed it so much, that we kinda...
Just let me, if I could just add one last thing, there's nothing in the ordinance that directs me to that decision. The reason it's here before you this evening is because I had no information to make the decision on, within our zoning ordinance. Nothing to direct me to make that decision. The RSA that you brought up was somewhat leading to a decision, but it certainly was not... one that took into consideration all the factors of this application.
Right. I mean, it isn't that half the house is sitting in that lot, you know what I mean?
So for criteria number one, we've already had the public hearing. We've had testimony by the applicant. We've had questions and comments from the board. Is there a motion?
Well, it was a finding of fact from the abuddists that were here that will not be contrary to the public interest.
And this is for section?
One.
Section?
Right, section one. No, this is for 302B or 303B or both?
Both.
Would be my request.
So we're handling both 303B and 302B simultaneously.
And I think that's been done before.
Do I have a second to the motion? Or the finding of fact was that the reason stated by the applicant, I'm sorry?
That the abuddists were not contrary, that they were not contrary to public interest.
Do I have a second to that motion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Second, this is under the simplex analysis, so special conditions exist that such, that, such, such that liberal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship.
Where is that one?
Under the first prong of simplex, that the zoning restriction as applied interferes with the reasonable use considering the unique nature of the property. Again, we're unique from a standpoint. We have this bifurcation of a line, and we have the toe of the building coming across. You don't, to the best of my knowledge, have that situation anywhere else in town. The B3 district being abutting it, the fact that this is a taxed lot, and the fact that we are desiring to put a residential structure on the Newmarket side is the reasonable use.
Just to interject, I think there was a variance. I don't know if it changes the zoning or not, but there was a variance to make the abutting lot residential lot.
Yes.
One up, right behind?
Yeah.
The two adjacent lots to the right.
Two or three.
Three.
The two adjacent lots to the right, the variance was passed-
Into the B3?
Yes, the variance was passed to make them residential.
So thereby, again, you're, what we're asking to do is not gonna be a substantial change to the neighborhood. You've got the swamp conservation land across the way. That this desired use for the Richmond's is something that is reasonable considering the unique configuration of the property. And we'd ask that you grant or find this element of simplex.
Any questions or comments from the board? Now I'd like to open up the public hearing. Any members of the public for or against this application?
We're for it.
I'd like to close the public hearing. A motion is in order for-
Make a motion.
You do it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion from the finding of fact that restrictions as applied interferes with the landlord's reasonable use of the property considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. Let's see. As there's no abuddists that, that are speaking against it.
A second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 All those against? Zero.
The next prong of simplex is there's no fear and substantial relationship between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and the specific restrictions that we are seeking the relief from. Again, because of the unique configuration, exists pre-existing lot with the town line and the partial building over the line, we're not really violating the setbacks, the density issues that you're usually concerned with. One of the prongs of your density element, as I've addressed with you before, tends to be focused on the multifamily units. You want to have the more highly dense areas of town closer to the town services. This is not gonna be one of those situations where you have a concern of that. And we're asking that you find that's because the stated purposes did not conflict with the desired purpose here that you find in our favor on that element of simplex.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments? We go open up the public hearing. Any members of the public that would like to speak for or against the application?
We're still for it.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Motion is in order.
I'll make a motion, the finding of fact that the specific restrictions on the property, in light of the location of the property on the edge of town and adjacent to the B3 district, there is no fear and substantial relationship between either the general purpose of the zoning ordinance or the specific purposes expressed in section 303.
Have a second?
Second, did you want to mention 302 also, or just?
I think it's only 303 in this one.
303, that would be the use.
Yeah.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The third prong of the simplex use variance would be that the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. Again, the abuddists who expressed their concerns earlier appear to be satisfied with the recommendations, the presentation that we had made. That this, this configuration with the toe, again, there would be no abuddists who would be injured. There would be no issue of the public rights being injured, again, because the septic that would be necessary for this is going to gain state approval. The building permit that we would be gaining for this, we're going to have to comply with standard construction techniques which prevent the runoff during, during construction when the earth is disturbed. This should not be an issue that affects the public or private rights of others. And we'd ask that you find in our favor of the third prong of the simplex hardship standard.
Questions or comments from the board? Open up the public hearing? Close the public hearing? Motion is in order?
I'll make a motion that's a finding of fact that the public or private right of others would not be harmed. That's all I need.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. I'd like to, just for the record, know that there are no members of the public here for the case, unless-
There were.
There were. So I just, unless they come back, I'm not gonna continue to say that I'm gonna open and close the public hearing.
I think it'd be safer to do it.
Yeah, well, then I can do it. If, what are you gonna say?
Yeah, Leo's in the audience, so.
Yeah.
He's public.
He might want to talk.
The next element we address in our application is a BOSHA area variance because we do not have two acres of land on the Newmarket side. So the first prong is that the area variance is needed to enable the proposed use, given special conditions of the property. The special conditions is this is a grandfathered lot with less than two acres. It's taxed as a buildable lot. It's on the edge of town, right bisected by the town line. It is adjacent to the B3 zone. In fact, it's the only R1 on that side of the line north of the B3 zone. The applicant does not own any more property on, in Newmarket, adjacent to this property. Therefore, there is not more that we could do to do something on our own, a lot line adjustment. Therefore, we need this variance to enable us to have a buildable lot, gain a building permit.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I got a question.
Okay.
Do they really need this when we determine this is a grandfathered lot and it's less than two acres?
Again, well, Dan mentioned it's because the portion of the abutting-
Of the house.
House was on this.
Okay.
And there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that addresses this situation. So it's a better safe than sorry type of, is that the gist of it?
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the Newmarket tax map. Bacon land, that's what I'm looking at. That's what I'm looking at, bacon land. You know, it shows no structure being taxed in Newmarket. That's why I question.
I don't know how to answer for the assessment.
It's all being paid in Lee. Right?
Any other questions or comments? I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak for or against this application?
I guess I have. Neil Fillion, Lafayette Ave, I question the need for a variance for a grandfathered existing lot. Any other place in town, if this was occurred, they would not have to grant a variance. It was a quarter of acre. In fact, most of the lots in town are quarter acre, half acres. And if there existed lots of record, when zoning was adopted, they have grandfathered lots and they have buildable lots without any variance.
They did bring up, oh, we had a RSA, do you have that?
RSA 674.
One that brought up some question to it, but-
674-53.
We, we, we feel the same way. I think in general that this is a-
Belt and suspenders is my phrase.
Land affected by municipal boundaries, 674-53.
674, that's one.
Right. But it's a matter of, it states that you can use a municipal boundary as a boundary line. Unless a structure is dependent on land in the other municipality, which is what's occurring here.
I didn't read that. I-
It's in here.
You're saying if they struck, if the other lot is requiring something on this lot in order to be legitimate, yes. In other words, if some of this area was used to meet one of Lee's zoning requirements, then that would be true. Didn't say a portion, this is, I didn't read it that way.
I think rather than reopen the discussion, it may be because the frontage is all in Newmarket, you can make that administrative gloss decision to say, let's be safe and sorry. Let's go forward and hear the elements. I believe we meet them under BOSHA, that I need the area variance because I don't have enough land in Newmarket. And there's no physical way, the second prong of BOSHA is that the benefits sought, i.e. our ability to gain a building permit for the Newmarket side, cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for us to pursue, other than the variance. We talked about it before. It's economically infeasible to move the existing structure so that it's only on the Lee side of life. And we cannot do basically anything else to add acreage to Newmarket. So I believe I meet both of the BOSHA criteria, and we'd ask you to find in favor of us for both criteria.
Just as a reminder, B1 needs to be voted on, motion and vote on, so just don't miss that where you need to make this motion.
We're, public hearing is still open.
I'm sorry.
Any other comments from the public? I'd like to close the public hearing. Motion is in order for BI.
BI, yeah. It's a finding of fact that I'll make a motion that an area variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property as the lot line bisects part of a home.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
The second prong of BOSHA, I spoke briefly, apologized during the public hearing. But in essence, we can't add acreage. We can't afford to move the house. Therefore, there's no feasible alternative but this area variance.
Any questions or comments from the board? No? I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this variance?
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah, you have to state your name and address.
My name's Paulie House, 299 Wadley Falls Road, Lee, and Newmarket.
Just, just if you step up to the podium, then you'd have, because we have to get this on tape.
Okay.
Thank you.
My house lot goes straight uphill. The whole thing is a hill. There is no way to put the house anywhere else. And we do have a flattened area where there used to be a sand pit, which would very nicely put a small house. We had hoped that this wouldn't be a huge issue. And I really didn't understand that it would, you know, it's, it's all my land. It's all my, it's my property. And I felt that two houses on this property, because it's a large piece of property and no other piece can be built upon, it made very good sense. And I just hope that you will consider that. And by the way, I also am very conservation minded, and I do not want anything to go into Tuttle Swamp. Who named that? Swamp. Right across from my house, I have swamp. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing. And a motion is in order?
Well, it's a finding of fact that benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance. And there is no other land adjacent that he can add to.
Second? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
The third element, although it seems like we've hit more, the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The Chester Rod and Gun Club case, as I cite in my materials, has clarified finally that in part, certain of the elements, the same evidence applies, that we consider them all together, especially spirit of the ordinance and entry to the public interest, not contrary to the public interest. And here, the issue is really, will we change the lay of the land out there? Are we doing something that is violative of the very essence of your zoning ordinance? And here, the answer is clearly no. This is adding a structure on an existing grandfathered lot. This is gonna be obtained with a building permit where all of the controls are in place that the town has deemed necessary for the building of a lot. It does not change the essential character of this locality. In fact, it is in keeping with the general nature of the locality. Especially given the fact that zoning variances have been granted to allow the residential structures on the smaller lots adjacent in the B3 zone. So we would ask for a favorable finding in this criteria also.
Any questions or comments from the board? I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak for or against this variance? Close the public hearing. Motion is in order.
I'll make a motion defining a fact that the variance is consisted, consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Fourth element is that substantial justice would be done by granting the variance. As was mentioned in the variance application before, the guiding rule that the OEP gives us is that whether any loss to the individual would be out- be outweighed by gain to the general public. And when there is not that outweighing in favor of the general public, it is deemed an injustice. In this situation, there is nothing to be gained to the public by denying this variance. It would do an injustice, a disservice to the applicant to deny, and therefore, we believe we have met the criteria for substantial justice.
Is there any questions or comments by the board? I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak for or against this application for this variance?
I have a question for...
We'll do it after, close the public hearing. Go ahead.
Oh, the question was for Ms. House.
Oh, yes. You can ask anytime.
What do you see as being the next generation use of these two houses?
Well, hopefully, my parents will live forever. Should that not happen...
Then we'll all have you to take care of.
I see myself moving into that house at some point in time. And my daughter lives in the other house, I see that continuing to be her house. And by that time, most of us will be dead, and it really won't matter.
And on that cheery note...
Sorry.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Motion is in order, or substantial justice is done.
It's defining a fact that granting a variance, relief will be done and substantial justice is done.
If the finding of fact was that relief will be granted, and therefore, the substantial justice will be done? Did I misunderstand it?
Yeah, that's what I know.
Did I misunderstand it? Did I misunderstand that? Finding of fact is...
Yeah.
By granting relief, substantial justice is...
Substantial justice is done.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Value of surrounding...
Value of surrounding properties will not be diminished. In this situation, actually, by adding the structure to the Newmarket side, you're increasing the tax base, you're increasing the tax value to the Newmarket side. That will have only a positive impact for this area. The abutters who were here were from the Lee side. There's no potential of negative impact with them, because everything we're doing is on the Newmarket side. No Newmarket abutters have come in, and it's my understanding that across the way is frankly townland, it's the Tuttle Swamp. So we can't really negatively impact the swamp value. So we believe we have met the value criteria, the final value for variance on both elements.
Questions or comments from the board? Yes?
The concerns of the abutters were that it wasn't going to be a mobile home or anything, and they did state that it would be a stick-built house, and I would like to-
Correct.
-make sure that it is, I would do a condition.
Okay.
Okay?
Are there any other questions or concerns? I think that's, thank you very much for that. Would you like to open up the public hearing? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak for or against, for or against the variance? Close the public hearing. There's no other questions or comments, the motion is in order.
I'll make a motion defining a fact that the value of surrounding properties would not be diminished. In fact, it would most likely improve the value of surrounding properties.
I think it would be appropriate when we're doing the final approval, or now, it could be added, a condition could be added, but if we add a condition now, I think it should be restated when we do, when we vote yes or no on the entire thing. Do I have a second?
End.
Second. Oh, was there?
No, no.
It's cleaner if you put it at the end.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
At any point, we can-
That's it.
Go ahead and can make a motion for the application as a whole, citing Sections 303B and 302B. Because they've been done simultaneously, but I think we should approve them, saying, spelling it out.
Well, I'd like to make a motion defining a fact that the applicant having met the five criteria, we grant the variance, referencing Sections 302B and 303B of Newmarket zoning ordinance for the property at Wadley Falls Road, tax map R5, lot 5-13, R1 zone.
With conditions.
With conditions, what conditions?
That the guest house be changed to residential unit. It's just a little...
Or single-family residential.
Single-family. Be changed to a single-family residential unit. That the building be stick-built and not a mobile home, as promised to the abutters. Just a quick statement with the new roof and all that, that is going to add non-pervious to that. So I would like Dan to see some type of drainage plants for the property. Nothing really, whatever he deems necessary.
Well, I'm not so sure that works.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, this is from the site plan review, and this is the assistant here making that determination. That'll grab me.
Read out, "For sites which do not require a site-specific permit, the applicant shall document reasonable controls provided to prevent erosion on the site during construction, following construction, but before permanent vegetation is reestablished and on the finished site. Total suspended soils leaving the site should be limited to near development levels." Should be limited to...
Predevelopment.
Predevelop.
Near predevelopment levels.
To aid in the protection of the Great Bay Estuary. Well, they don't require a site-specific permit. As for the...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I believe that's the type of thing that I was envisioning being required in the building permit phase. That's the usual construction techniques, so that you put the steel fencing up, you're eliminating the drainage, and those steel fences stay up until the revegetation has taken hold. I believe that's what your site reg is going towards, and I see no problem in making a reference to that as a condition of the building permit, because the reputable builder that they're going to be using is going to do that anyway.
What do you think? Would you like to say this one?
Yeah, could you just? This one here?
Yes.
So we've only got, yours is, yours is on the table, right, with pending condition?
Yeah. I said the motion already. With conditions, and she's making the conditions.
Yeah, basically, I'm a Menden Richards. I'm adding to his...
You're making the conditions.
Yeah. The application shall document to prevent on the site during construction and then following construction, but before permanent vegetation is reestablished and on the finished site. Should be limited to near...
Okay, I would like to vote on your, I think that what we should do is, since he did make a motion...
Vote on that?
See the motion through, because there is a motion on the table. And versus having a motion made, then amending it...
Well, I'm just adding to it.
He doesn't think that the additions need to be, the conditions need to be added?
Okay, so, okay, so we...
I don't think the conditions need to be added. I don't think, but we can vote on it.
Can we restate the motion?
Did you write down the motion I made?
Yeah.
Repeat it.
I remember.
Motion was for finding a fact that having the applicant met the five criteria to grant the variance, reference Section 3.02B and 3.03B, for the property located at Wadley Falls Road, tax map R5, lot 5-13, in the R1 zone.
That was the motion I made.
Is there a second? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
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 I vote, no, I was, I wanted to add a condition.
One, two, three, four to one.
Of the stick-built.
But that would be in, wouldn't that be in the condition that I'll make? The conditions that I'll make?
We're voting on his motion.
Oh, okay.
We'll redo that.
I made the motion.
Why did you vote? Why did you vote no, because of the stick-built?
Right, I don't, I, well...
We didn't vote on any motions, any, any...
This is to grant the entire variance as a whole for 301, 302.
Right.
Yep, and...
I didn't put any conditions on my vote.
You did, right, and that's why I wanted to have that separate from, that was set onto the table.
Right.
And members of the board can either agree with that, or they can disagree with that. We've had a lot of discussion with regarding, well, residential stick-built, the stick-built house.
And I thought my motion passed 4 to 1.
It did, but she didn't understand what...
No, yeah, why did you vote no, because of stick-built? Wouldn't that be followed with me under conditions?
There's no more conditions after this is, that's approved.
Oh, no, I want the conditions, so I rescind my vote. We have to have the conditions.
Okay, so the vote, but still...
I didn't understand that. I thought you said that I shouldn't amend his vote.
I don't think we can put conditions on a type of house he's going to build.
He promised the abutters it would be stick-built, and that would fall under diminuation of property, diminished property values. They don't want a mobile home there, that's what they stated. So if the abutters feel that strong, and he made a public statement that it's going to be stick-built, I think it should be.
But the three members of the board, they don't feel that they...
I didn't understand his, I thought, the way it was explained to me, he made a motion that we accept the variance, and that I shouldn't amend his motion then with the conditions that we should vote on that, and then I should make my conditions, and we should vote on that.
Did anybody else understand that the same way?
I did.
Yes, essentially, yes.
Yeah.
All right, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's, he made a motion, and we should vote on that motion. Then, because it was, he was in the middle of making a motion, so I guess we're going to revote on your motion, that no... Could we please restate that motion again, just to be consistent?
That having, the applicant having met the five criteria, the board grant the variance for Section 3.02B and Section 3.03B, for the property located at Wadley Falls Road, tax map R5, lot 5-13, in the R1 zone. There are no conditions on Richard's motion.
Okay, this is what we're voting on, there are no conditions. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. Okay, now, the motion did not pass, is there another motion on the table?
So basically, you're saying we can't vote yes on his amendment to pass it, and then do another one for conditions?
Nothing just happened right now.
Okay, nothing just happened.
Because you need three affirmative votes for or against something to make something happen.
But I think the reason everyone didn't vote on it is because they think that we, they think that we cannot make another motion af, if we accept his motion as stated.
Yep, then...
Can we, we're done, okay.
Okay, so now another motion is on?
I think there can be more than one motion.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But you've got to state it.
So then I would basically make the same motion Richard did, but I would state my conditions. So I would state the same thing that Richard did, but with conditions. And the conditions are that the guest house be changed to a single-family residential unit, that the home be stick-built, as told to the abutters, and that in keeping with 3.14 in Site Plan Review, 3.14B, that would be, that would give Dan leverage to make sure that runoff be controlled to his satisfaction. And also that the culvert and the frontage in front of their house be kept clean, so any additional runoff from the non-pervious, from the roof, doesn't just drain down and go into Tuttle Swamp.
Very ambiguous as far as drainage.
Okay.
It could cost them $100, it could cost them $100,000, depending on when it needs to be done. Study of hydrology is expensive.
Well, it would just, if you read this, I mean, it would be just Dan's, it's not very specific, we're not asking for all that real engineering type of stuff, we're just asking that...
But that's for, if you read the first sentence? It doesn't require a site-specific permit?
As pertaining to the sites. But this, I'm doing, I'm doing 314B for sites which do not require a site-specific permit, which this doesn't.
What is it?
The application shall document reasonable controls provided to prevent erosion on the site during construction, following construction, but before permanent vegetation is reestablished and on the finished site. Total suspended solids leaving the site should be limited to near predevelopment levels to aid in the protection of the Great Bay Estuary.
Go ahead.
Is that not applicable regardless of whether it's tagged on as a condition or not?
Well, it should be, because it states here that this is what you have to do for sites that do not require a site-specific. This doesn't require a site-specific, but it gives Dan a little control, so I feel that they should adhere to 3.14B in site-specific.
Okay, everybody's heard everything that's been said tonight. If you feel that those conditions should apply to the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. All those opposed?
And just for the record, can the notice of decision state that we do, the board found that we do not have to have a variance for 7.02, whatever I applied for, since that was not part of the motion?
Yes. Just to state that we rescinded.
Yes, I did earlier. For the record, I'll restate the position on Section 7.02B of the Newmarket zoning ordinance, that zoning administrator rescinded the request for compliance for variance for that issue. And Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, did the conditions pass or not pass?
It passed.
The conditions passed. And I can say, just in relation to that, that all the information the board can give me certainly gives me more direction as to what we can do with the requirements that the board sees. Just, you know, to be vague about it, the more you say it could be, it certainly helps.
Are you speaking with regards to that specifically?
Any, anything that comes before me.
Very difficult, some instances, because a lot of the conditions are valid for her, but, yeah, I can...
If it wasn't in such close proximity to Tuttle Swamp, and, I mean, the lay of the land there, and it... the land there, and it's, it's, it's a...
In fact, Tuttle Swamp is the abutter, and there's nobody from Tuttle Swamp to speak for it, so we're acting...
Well, that's, that's a good point, and Chris, I wonder if you could help us for a minute? I think you're presenting at Newington next month, are you? And maybe I could ask you a question, you could help me with this. Is it on some of the occasion when we review the criteria for variance, and the comment comes back, is I'm approving this variance because nobody is here to oppose it?
That has validity in, in certain of the elements, because you would view it as, if somebody had heartburn about it, they would be here. If an abutter is concerned about the property value, they're going to show up and raise the roof. You've seen it countless times.
But to say that when nobody is here, it's taking away, is the board acting irresponsibly just to accept that nobody is in the galler?
It's, it's a fact that can...
The board has representative immunity.
Lean on this, get it through. I think the issue is, it depends. It depends on which element. It definitely comes into play on no diminution of surrounding property values.